Okay, good evening. This is the regular meeting agenda of the Borough of Bloomingdale, Tuesday, January 18, 2022 at 7:00 PM. The call to meeting to order start with a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Demato.
Here.
Councilman Catalano.
Here.
Councilwoman Graziano.
Here.
Councilwoman Hudson.
Here.
Councilwoman Julen.
Here.
Councilwoman Schubert.
Here.
Councilwoman Yazde, sorry.
Here. We also have our municipal clerk, Brianna Smith, business administrator, Michael Sondemeyer, and borough attorney, Dawn Sullivan. This meeting is called to pursuant of the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law. Adequate notice of this meeting was advertised in the Herald News on January 12, 2022. Copies were provided to the local news media and posted continuously in the municipal building. A copy of this notice is available to the public and is on file in the office of the municipal clerk. As per state fire code, I am required to acknowledge that there are two emergency exits in this council chambers, the main entrance which you enter through, and a second exit to the left where I am seated. If there is an emergency, walk orderly to the exit and exit through the door, down the stairs, and out the building. See any questions, please raise your hand. Okay, see and done. We don't have any non-agendas. Can I have a motion, open up early public comment, please?
Someone?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anyone wanted to speak, please come up. State your name and address.
Linda Huntley, 86 Van Damme. I have a number of issues. The first one is Resolution 20, well, one that deals with the memorandum of agreement between the Borough of Bloomingdale and the PBA.
Mm-hmm.
My issue is not with the rationale for it. My issue is with the fact that you're going to be signing a side agreement with the PBA. Side agreements really are not something that is, should really be used, as far as I understand it. For me, as a professional, you'd never use a side agreement because it institutes, a lot of times it's going to be fraudulent information. I know the contract is not fraudulent, but I just wonder why we're using a side agreement and not amending the contract.
Well, just to tell you what the history of this, you probably know it. The chief came to the Public Safety Committee, and with all the retirements that we have and the promotions, with two lieutenants leaving, as per policy, technically, we're supposed to wait a certain period of time before we can issue a test for the lieutenants. So the chief came to us, and we know that's part of the contract to do that. He wants to get the process started earlier. With doing that, the PBA has to agree to that. So he came to the Public Safety Committee and said, "I'm going to send information and get permission from both, and from the borough attorney and from the PBA, to start the process earlier, so we can fulfill those two positions," which is going to take months. So, with saying that, sending the information to our borough attorney and to the PBA, the PBA agreed that they would let us start the process earlier. So with saying that, the borough attorney gave us the okay to have, you can call it a side agreement, whatever you want to call it, the okay to do that, with both sides agreeing to it. And I believe the Public Safety Committee was in favor of it, and we notably, the chief operates, so all we're doing is starting the process a little bit earlier than it should be, so we can fulfill these positions. So with saying that, the borough attorney says, the way it was written, "Gave me authorization to sign it." So, and I would not sign it without the authorization of our borough attorney. So that's where we are today.
Okay, my question still, it has nothing to do with the fact that what you're doing, it's the fact of how it's being done.
It's being done as a memorandum of agreement. I know the resolution uses the phrase "side agreement." It is a memorandum of agreement, which is used very frequently to amend an agreement in a very specific, limited way. An addendum to agreement generally is an addendum to the entire agreement for the length of the agreement, such as changing the number of officers permitted throughout the course of the PBA contract, something along those lines. This is just a very limited duration change, and it was done through, it's actually called, the document is actually called a memorandum of agreement. And it's a formal agreement, which was negotiated with all of the correct procedures under the statutes governing the PBA negotiations, was vetted by, as the mayor said, was vetted by our office, was vetted by the Public Safety Agreement, Public Safety Committee, and the PBA's attorney. In fact, the PBA's attorney actually drafted the memorandum of agreement. Everything is being done above board, everything's being done out in the open. So I understand your dislike of the term "side agreement." It's not, it's not anything that is unusual or untoward, and the actual name of the agreement is a memorandum of agreement.
No, I have a request therefore, that this resolution be changed to address that it's a memorandum of agreement and not a side agreement. Because I did do some research, and supposedly Professor George Cohen from the University of Virginia School of Law stated that side agreements upend the complete contract that exists within contract theory, because side agreements are a deliberate attempt to make the main contract incomplete. So my contention is that if you're saying the side agreement, that's what you're doing, and I have an issue with that.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, we can amend the resolution to read memorandum of agreement rather than side agreement. It is what the formal document is entitled.
Well, in the resolution, it does say memorandum.
That is the title, but in, actually, in the title, but in the body of, in the body of the resolution, it does say.
We can fix that. We could.
Side agreement.
We'll take care of that.
And if that will allay your concerns, then that's a very easy fix.
Okay, I also do want to ask if there are any other side agreements that the town has entered into?
Side agreements?
Mm-hmm.
No. Not that I know of. I have no side agreements with anybody.
Has there been any that have been entered into, that you're aware of?
That I'm aware of? No.
Okay, I'm bound to provide an awful request now, because since I saw this, I saw Rich live, I wanted to find out, and is there any, well, side agreements within the town? And I will give this to you to read before I leave.
Okay.
The next one I have is as far as the RER agreement. It said there's, the contract was supposed to be attached, and I didn't see the contract. If you want me to. Wasn't there the public documents?
I don't like to give that until they're signed.
Say it again.
The contracts are available once they're signed. So I can send it to you once it's signed.
And how could I even question it if I don't see it?
I never put the contracts before the council approves them. I actually never put the councils, the contracts online. They're only available in my office via Oprah.
But everyone up here has a copy of that contract.
The council does, but the public does not.
That's what I'm asking, yeah. Right, everybody up here got that?
Mm-hmm.
Eevee?
I'm sure I did.
Yep.
Because I'm looking at it, so that's, I know it's, I know it's, was sent to the whole council.
Okay, well, I'm going to ask for that contract to be sent to me tomorrow if possible. I also, now, on the bills list, there's a repaired Bailey Avenue fence. Where is the?
At the end of Star Lake Road in Bailey Ave. There's a creek. There's a black fence that goes around the top of the creek. A car hit that and took the fence out.
That's borough property?
That's borough property.
It was covered by insurance. We're paying, but we got reimbursed.
We got reimbursed for that.
Okay, and then Johnson Soils Company is a soil analysis and report. What are we having problems with?
They did a soil analysis at the salt shed. We put a new salt shed in down at DPW.
Okay.
So they did three borings to test the soil, to see if it's able to hold the new shed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to come up? See, no one, motion to close.
Some move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Reporter committees, anyone?
I have a couple of things from the Health Department. COVID testing, January 19th and 21st, 10 to 4, at Passaic County Community College here in Wanacue. COVID vaccine and booster information are, COVID vaccines and boosters are given Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. At 9:30, Riverview Drive in Totowa, no appointment necessary. People can also now get their free COVID tests. It is now open. They said the 19th, but it's open today. You can go to two different sites. It's USPS.com/Covidtest or covidtest.gov. Also, a couple reminders, just I had from our social media, dog and cat licenses are due January 31st, taxes due February 1st. If anyone has not signed up for SWIFT 911, you can access that on the homepage of the borough website. And then just also a reminder, I pulled off for February, that there's Town Hall and no DPW pickup on February 21st. I think that is President's Day.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Rose held their first meeting of the year last night here. The second one is the 31st of January, 7:00 PM here, invite the public to come and provide some input. I'd like to just recognize Rich for stepping up and sharing Rose. Thank you, Rich. And then back are Tia Brady, Matt, Bob Libby, and Karen. They're all back. So, good discussion yesterday, just kind of recalibrate from being away, I don't think they met in person last year, right? No? So kind of recalibrate, make some changes, and things that we're no longer doing, some things that we are doing. And then again, we're soliciting ideas, you know, from the public. So spread the word, and if you can make the next meeting, it's January 31st, 7 o'clock here.
Okay. Anybody else? No, all good.
I went to the Library Committee, and they just have a couple of events coming up. There's a fundraiser for Taste Philly British on Union Ave. They haven't, I think the date is going to be February 23rd for that, where you buy your food there and they get a percentage. And there's a designer handbag bingo coming up, April 1st. It's a Friday night. And there's also a Queens Tea, High Society Tea House in Wayne, Sunday, April 24th, from 3:00 to 6:00. And there's a dueling pianos that's going to happen Saturday, May 7th, at the Glenwell Lake House. And that's $40 a person, and you could buy the tickets with their PayPal online. And they gave a nice gift to Al Pelagreno that.
Al Pelagreno.
Al Pelagreno, yeah.
That he retired, and it was really, really sentimental, and it was very nice. That's that.
Okay. Also, with Taste Philly British, tomorrow, the PTA is doing their fundraiser there, and that is from 4:00 to 7:30. And they do, and there's also one for the Fire Department coming up. I don't know the exact date, I think it'll be posted, but I think it's the 26th, I think. I'm not sure. I just heard about that kind of last night. Couple things that's gone over the weekend. First of all, I'd like to thank the DPW guys for the work they did in the storm between the ice and the slush and the snow, and cleaning our roads up. They did a really great job. When I rode through the town yesterday, early, the roads were really clean. Fire department wise, we had a structure fire on Fitcher Street, which everybody probably saw that posted on Facebook. There is a dog missing. We at first thought the dog was in the house when we were done, so we went looking. The dog got out, but now that they can't find the dog. So, there's 1-862-266-2607 phone number, if anybody sees it. It's a corgi mix. It's a cute, if anybody wants to see it. It's on Facebook, if anybody, I don't know if you can see it from there. But he's a cute little dog. The cat came back from what I was told, because there's a cat and a dog in the house, but the cat made its way back, but they're still looking for the dog, so hopefully the dog will be found. But I'd also like to thank the Fire Department for being there. The response was very quick, and they held it to a pretty much a one-room fire upstairs. And the fire is still under investigation, how it started, they're not sure, but the homeowner, the one homeowner was taken to the hospital to be checked out, and luckily, no life was lost, which was a good thing. And we had response from towns around, that was spectacular.
Our Fire Department's been.
What's that?
Our Fire Department has been very busy.
Busy. Yeah, we've been to structure fires in Kennelon. We had one today at a school in Wanacue. We had ours on Saturday, and the local fire departments all around us have been very busy with the cold weather. So I think that's promoted most of this.
Yeah, that 287.
Yeah, then we had a tractor trailer yesterday at 4:30 in the morning, tractor trailer on the Bloomingdale side, jackknifed on 287, so we, the Fire Department went up there, along with Morris County Hazmat, Passaic County Hazmat, and with the Riverdale Fire Department, and State Police, and the local police officers to shut down Route 287. It was closed from 4:30 to about 6, no, probably later than that, 8 o'clock on the northbound side. The southbound was never completely closed, so that stayed open. So all around us, we've been very busy.
Did we assist in Passaic, or no?
Yes, that's, yes, yes. We actually sent one engine down to Passaic. We sent, and everybody probably saw that on the regular news and on Facebook, there was a chemical chlorine plant down there. And the mutual aid agreement with Patterson and the local departments around us, they had a spectacular turnout. They shut down Route 21 in both directions to get water across, and they were able to contain the fire, so it did not get into the chlorine, which was amazing, because you had guys inside pushing the fire back away from it, which was pretty dangerous, but it could have been worse if the chlorine was part of that alarm. And then we were down there for probably a good 14 hours, with two different crews shuttling people back and forth. So, like we said, the local fire departments have been very busy. That's all I have.
Just a couple of things. We had a water break on Van Damme in Chestnut last week, which was a plug that actually gave way, or a cap. And then on the Drug Alliance side, March 8th, that evening, Thursday, April 7th, will be the Unity Event at Walty Bergen, that the council will be invited to participate in, with the teachers, and the police, and firemen, and the students. It's a dodgeball unity event, so. Should be, they're looking forward to it. Superintendent and principal are on board. Kim is doing a bang-up job up there, Julen, getting that going with Detective, or actually Sergeant Greenwood, so.
Read the next meeting, we're recognizing the toy, right, the next meeting?
February 1st, yes.
February 1st. Yeah, just one other item, on February 1st, our next meeting, we're going to recognize the committee and a large group that did the toy drive for around the holidays. They did one heck of a job getting toys donated to families in need. So we want to recognize that group. And there was a lot of people involved, and a lot of, I'll call them junior committee members, that helped out. So we're going to recognize them at our February 1st meeting. And also, Meg Gray?
We're trying to.
We're trying to, for her time on the Recreation Committee for over 20 years.
Sorry, just want to confirm, are we doing the 15th for recognizing the toy drive? See that in the email we got?
Oh, you might be right. The 15th.
I think it was the second meeting.
The second meeting.
Whatever I put in the email is the right date.
All right, so February 15th.
It's the second, not a lot of dates.
All right, all right, the second meeting, all right, correct us on that.
They all know the right date.
All right. Okay.
What's the, on that, with that email, the February 1st residence around 200 feet around Boke Pond, is that a discussion about the rink?
No, the, we're going for open space grant to possibly be able to put in to replace the playground at Boke Pond. It's there over 20, 20 to 25 years, and it's getting to the point where it doesn't meet the requirements for kids.
Handicapped kids and stuff like that?
It would be for everybody, all right? And it's specific age groups, 5 to?
5 to 12 is Phase 1, and then 2 to 5 is Phase 2.
With Phase 2, we're applying for a $250,000 grant to replace that playground. And when doing that, you have to notify the residents that they've been 200 feet of it. Okay? All right. Okay. Resolution 2022 1.91 Consent Agenda. Do you have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Some move.
Second.
Okay, any questions before we?
Yeah, just a quick question on the memorandum for the PBA agreement. So I meet with the chief once every couple of months, and we sit and have coffee, and just, we talk about what's going on in the borough, and the chief walked me through his plan.
Mm-hmm.
Spot on, it's phenomenal. I mean, what he's doing to fortify the bench, so to speak, right, is, it's a good plan. I like it, great job. I fully support it, without question. What I'm a little uncertain or unclear is, just over a year ago, we, and Dawn, maybe you can help me out here, we create the position of a borough administrator. And the borough administrator has certain responsibilities, and we decided we were going to take the government in a new direction, that we all would agree, okay? And I think so far, it's working out nicely. On this one, why would we go with the mayor's signature? And this is not a John Demato question, this is the mayor. Why would we have the mayor sign this and not the borough administrator?
Because the mayor and council are the appointing authority for the police department. This is a police department agreement.
Was the contract signed at one point by the borough administrator?
It was. I signed it when it first came over, but that may have been premature.
So my question, just seems like it's.
I can't answer that. All I know is that the mayor is authorized to sign this because the mayor and council are the appointing authority for the police department. And so, as the appointing authority, the mayor has the authority to sign this.
The borough administrator does not have the authority to sign it?
I did not say that.
Okay.
I'm saying the mayor has the authority to sign this.
Does one have more authority than the other?
Absolutely not.
Okay, in my opinion, this would be more in line with our philosophy of a borough administrator and a strong council, as far as the signature goes.
Then that is a policy decision, that this council would need to solidify what they want the administrator to actually take responsibility for, and what the mayor would take responsibility for.
And I think that presents a good opportunity to maybe define or redefine some of the borough administrators' roles, responsibilities.
Again, that's for the.
That's another discussion.
Yeah, that's for the council to solidify. There are, in the code, there are duties laid out for the administrator, and for the mayor, and for the council. The mayor is the head of the governing body, I'm sorry, the head of the governmental unit, the head of the borough.
Right.
That's per statute. So the mayor has the authority to execute any agreement, specifically when it comes to the police department. Again, the mayor and council are the appointing authority, so basically, they're the boss over the police department, for administrative functions, obviously not for police functions.
Again, I support this without question. To me, it just, it just seems like we're sort of, we're getting away from what I think we were trying to create, at least in my opinion, when we brought on a borough administrator. That's all. And I think that leads to, I think, future discussions.
Well, we can talk about that down the road. Just, I just want to make it clear to everybody, and especially you guys, all right? Anytime my signature goes on something, my signature, because I'm responsible for my signature. I follow the direction of our borough attorneys. I am not an attorney, I just follow direction through there. When our attorney says, "This is time to sign something," I do that. I don't do it on my own, okay? I don't have that knowledge to make that decision on my own. As I tell people jokingly, I came from cable TV, all right? This is a new role for me. I speak to our attorney a lot, because I need to be educated, as Mike did from the beginning, in being in this role. And as important as this role is, I take it very seriously. I'm here three or four days a week, sometimes too much, all right? But I try to learn as much as possible as we're going, as Mike is. I mean, we're, you know, we work very well together, and we try to keep everybody abreast of what's going on when it's really necessary, this day-to-day stuff that he might ask me a question on, or I'll have a question like today, "Why aren't the lights down off the hamper turnpike for Christmas?" It's the stuff I put out there. I get emails from residents complaining about certain things. I just go. I don't call Mike, I go, because I got the email, they're complaining to me. He has a lot to do, I can handle stuff on my own. That's my background, I dealt with the public my whole life. So if I can handle it, if I can't, then I go to Mike, I follow the chain of command. If it's DPW stuff, I go to Al, Mike, and Frank. I copy everybody on it, all right? I don't bypass the system, because that's how it works, so we don't get lost. So, you know, there might be a time that maybe we should sit down and have a conversation, as you're talking about, for, you know, GovOps, or whoever makes these decisions, the direction we want to go.
Yeah.
But I will not put my name on anything unless I'm authorized to do it. I sign mostly all the contracts that come through.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just my job.
Yeah, don't misread my questioning. It just seemed a little out of line when I saw that, so that's the reason I brought it up. Not questioning your ethics or your.
No, I appreciate that.
Your disregard for whatever, that's not where my question was coming from. It just seemed a little out of place, that's all.
And like I said, me and Mike communicate all the time. Mike sees the contracts, I see the contracts, I really go on his desk, and I kind of get them, and I sign stuff off, and we just kind of work pretty well together, and I think as this group is working well. And it's good to have conversations like this.
Agreed. So like, for me, lesson learned, what I would propose for those that were involved in the search for the borough administrator, I conducted those interviews. We're over a year from when we'd be hired, Mike, and it's probably a great time to sit back down and do an assessment, evaluation, you know, how are things going from, you know, from a borough administrator perspective? What are we doing really well? Where do we need some help? Where are we not doing well?
Let's just do that and set it up.
Yeah, let's.
I don't disagree with you. I think he'd appreciate it.
Yeah.
You know?
Okay.
All right?
All right, good.
So set that, that meeting up, and let's do it.
Okay.
I want to understand something about the contract signing concern. So, correct me if I'm wrong, but when a contract comes before us on the council, all right, and we vote for it, are we concerned about contracts where we're not voting on, or what? Just trying to understand. Are there contracts being signed that were not, as a council approved?
No.
No.
So, I mean, does it matter who signs it? I mean, I'm asking, just trying to understand, really, what's the concern?
I think what Drew's saying is that Mike, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is, Mike has a big role in the tent as administrator, and he has a lot of authority in the tent. And I don't know what past administrators did before John, how that was, because I was never part of that. But in John's role, he was the full-time mayor, administrator, everything, so he signed everything, whether it was the administrator's job, or the full-time mayor's job, he signed everything. But we approved all those contracts.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And as is we're doing here, we approve all the contracts. We approved a ton of contracts at the reorg, and we have some that we have to go in net. But Mike has the authority, all right? He is, as far as I'm concerned, running the town with our permission, because we have to vote on everything. We're responsible at the end of the day. And as the chief executor, I'm responsible, and I take that very serious.
To me, maybe I'm just, I don't know, maybe I'm thinking about this a little odd, but to me, kind of the natural progression would be to have the mayor sign it at the end, because it's, to me, that's kind of the last person, the last of the chain going up. So, I don't know, maybe, Dawn, you could correct me, but to me, if I'm, if I'm going to look at kind of the chain of command, at the end of the day, it's the mayor and council are at the top. And so I, if it's my opinion, John should sign it. I don't know.
But we can, we can work that out.
I'm just giving my opinion, since it was brought up, then, you know, I don't know.
And if we can do it a different way, we're supposed to do it a different way, or this is the way we do it, it just is what it is, and we will go where I guidance by our attorney, because at the end of the day, they represent us. So if we're making a mistake, we're going to go to them anyway. Like I said, when things come down the pipe that I'm not sure about, I have a direct line to Dawn, a direct line to Fred. Okay?
Can I just amend my motion to include the suggestion made by former councilwoman Linda Huntley?[1797.04] Huntley? I think that was great, and I appreciate, actually, your assistance there. And the feat, and the information about the professor and all that, that was really helpful, so I really thank you for that. I just want to amend the motion to include that revision, which are-
Changing it from side agreement to memorandum agreement.
Yeah, I don't like that one either, right side agreement, so I think that's good.
So, what are we going to do there? Do we need a vote on it, or can we just do?
Well, no, you didn't.
We didn't get to the vote yet.
It includes in the motion.
No, I know that, but once we authorize it.
Yes.
Yeah, and then Bree can just change that one word. I mean, it's just one word.
Okay?
Thank you, Linda.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else?
On that topic, since everyone was kind of weighing in, I kind of, I kind of agree with Dawn in the concept that, like, we're voting on the contracts, so I would expect the head of us to sign them. I just really hope, from a business administration perspective, that you have heavy participation in the actual contract negotiations. I think making sure that we separate that is really where, in my mind, we would want to see this go, so.
Well, the administrator is a big part of the negotiations for any contract.
Every contract.
He's in there, all of them, as is the Borough Attorney, and then myself.
Excellent.
Okay. Okay. Roll call, please. Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Julen?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Yazzi?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, number nine, pending items. I'm going to move A through E, and then we can have discussion on anything you'd like to talk about here. These are contracts that we have with our vendors, that we did not have contracts by the reorg meeting. So, now we received those contracts, and now we have to adopt them. So, it's adoption of resolution number 2022-1.97 through 2022-1.101. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Conversation. Any questions?
This geese flight control, I can't believe it's still going on.
No.
Do we need this?
Here's, this is, you want to explain it, you want me to? Okay. We, we had the geese guy riding around with the dog, all right? So, Mike and I had a discussion that, and we looked at how much that was costing us, okay? It was $20,000 a year every time we were done, to have this dog come out every day. This guy would come from Pennsylvania, take his little dogs, and run them around the fields.
If the geese were present.
If the geese were present. But we've been doing it for so many years, the geese are not here.
Right.
So, we don't want to stop, we don't want the geese to come to cause any problems, okay? So, we went to TruGreen, who's our one-in-care guy.
Yeah.
And say, is there anything that you guys can do to prevent the geese from coming here? Well, they do a treatment that they guarantee for half the price.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to try it, see if it works, because we have areas where our parks, where we don't want the geese stuff all over the place. So, we're going to give this a shot, see how it works. If there's any problems, you call them, they come out and take care of it. And they do it every time they do a feeding, right? And they put this stuff down. It's all natural, it's all safe, nobody's going to get hurt from it, kids can go on it afterwards, there's nothing-
Do you put signage before it goes up?
They put signage down when they're done, that it's been treated. And they do that now with the regular treatment, like a fertilizer, and they do that at the same time. And you have to stay off of fur, forget how many hours.
Yeah, and when we treat the school, we make sure we treat it when they're not in session. And then we also notify the Charbo Little League, and the softball, and the soccer program, football, saying that there's no use to the field tonight, because we sprayed fertilizer tonight. So, it just goes down when the fertilizer goes down, so it'll be the same conversation one.
Yeah. But this stuff is not harmless to anybody, okay?
So, how much are you saving?
10 grand.
And no little dog?
And no little dog.
No dog running around.
Yeah. And a canoe. We used to have a kayak on the top of this car, I guess the dog went in the water, you had to leave the boat. So, but we're going to try it, and see if it works, which I believe it will. Anything else? Okay, do I have a motion, please?
We have a motion in a second.
Roll call.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Julen?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Yazzi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes. Okay. Introduction to New Business, adoption of resolution 2022-1.102. Paying the bills. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Hudson?
Yes.
Julen?
Yes.
Schubert?
The bills as in all, that whole ticket list of everything?
Yep.
I had a question. What was that transmission, $4,000? It was like a big, something was fixed.
Transmission, it has to be a DPW bill.
One of the trucks went down.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yep. We got some old vehicles, that'll be another conversation coming up soon.
That's why we want to buy, you said you guys have listing for, that's a lot of money for an old car, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yazzi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes. Okay. Adoption of resolution number 2022-1.103 Budget Reserve Transfer. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any questions? Okay. Roll call, please.
Wait, I have a question.
Sure.
Are we, we're going to finish, right?
Go ahead.
Okay. The, on the website, when I went to print out, like, I was just going through the pictures, like, who updates that? Who's the, the town website IT person that updates, like, pictures? And, like, I went to click on a map, and then it didn't link to a map, only, like, Friendship Park Trail didn't link, like, some, there are old pictures on there. Who does that?
Um-
I can comment if you want.
Go ahead.
There's a few of us who have users, but the host is a company called CityNet. Send me an email if you see anything, I can get it to the company, and if you find a broken link or anything.
There's a vote pending.
Excuse me?
There's a vote pending for this resolution.
The reserve transfer.
For the reserve transfer.
What?
So, those comments really aren't appropriate at this point in time.
Oh, okay, I didn't know.
I would email Bree, she takes care of it.
Can I start? Roll call.
Okay, can we?
Yeah, roll call. Julen?
Yeah, yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Yazzi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes. Okay. Adoption of resolution 2022-1.04 Purchase of Salt. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Schubert?
Yes.
Yazzi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes. Okay. Adoption of resolution 2022-1.05 Purchase of Gas and Diesel Fuel. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Yazzi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Julen?
Yes.
Item D, adoption of resolution 2022-1.05 Purchase of Gas and Diesel Fuel. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Yazzi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Julen?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Introduction of ordinance number 1-2022 Salary Ordinance. Can I have a motion, every by title? So moved.
Second. An ordinance establishing a minimum and maximum range of salary and compensation for categories and titles of officers, non-contractual employees, and contractual employees of the Borough of Bloomingdale.
Okay.
Mayor, you can schedule the second and final hearing for February 1st.
Okay. Do I have a motion, open up late public comment?
If anybody has any questions on the ordinance, you can reach out to me during the week.
Motion open up late public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, so moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody wishing to speak, please come on up. Okay, do I have a motion to close late public comment? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Sorry, do you have a motion? Do you have the motion?
Raise your hand.
Raise your hand.
Okay. We do not have anything for executive session. Our next meeting will be February 1st, and then February 15th. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.